Welcome to City Council Chronicles. Somewhere out there, a city council meeting is happening, and you're not watching it, but I am. Hi there, I'm Michael Karlik and you're listening to the City Council Chronicles Podcast. For city council meeting reviews, swing on over to councilchronicles.com. Last week, I followed the rainbow to Dublin, Ireland, where the city council was raising a bitter ruckus over who should leave the room for a vote and whether to vote actually happened in the first place. Seems to me a couple of fellas were hitting the potato juice a little too hard. And I'm sorry, I'm being told that accent will not make it past the censors. Okay, fair enough. Also, do take a listen to my latest episode of the Best Thing/Worst Thing Project. I went to the desert of Las Cruces, New Mexico, and talked about sweet delicious chili.
The best time of the year I could tell you is when they fire up the canneries and everybody is harvesting the chili because people are roasting chili here in the stores, everywhere we buy chili. It's that smell of roasted chili, you get used to it, it makes you want to crave the chili for some reason. And that's what people always like about this time of year. It's this time to eat chili, you know? They hear these people roasting, or the barbecue roasting, they have their roasters out, your stores, everywhere you smell it, drive by, it just smells good. It's the best smell you can smell, I mean, it's enjoyable.
If you liked what you heard, subscribe on iTunes, or please leave a rating and short review. Today's episode is a real gem, because we go to Crystal, Minnesota. Population 22,000, just northwest of Minneapolis. I talked to Nancy LaRoche, the newest member of the city council. But don't let her fool you, she's been watching the council for quite a while, and she says things are much, much friendlier than they used to be. Plus, get the kids in the room, we're gonna talk animals. So stay tuned, episode 35, the music is by BenSound.com. Councilmember LaRoche, you are in your fifth month of going to city council meetings, and the one thing the people want to know, who is Bart?
Who is Bart, and where in the world is Bart? Bart is a box elder bug that I named and actually gave a title to. My first night of being elected, Bart made his presence known on the dais. He actually, I watched him walk from one end to the other towards me, right along the edge of the dais, and I went, "What a curious little fellow." And he actually hung out on my paperwork, I took a few photos and tweeted it and put it on my Facebook page, and he became quite popular in the few months that he made his presence at council meetings.
Okay, a lot of city councils have regular public commenters, your gadflies who show up. In this case, would you call Bart a regular council attendee?
Yes, he was, and he was quite interested in our city agenda, that's the page he hung out on the most. I think he was trying to help our city manager, who sits next to me, stay on track, and as a matter of fact, he seemed to favor her at council meetings, because one meeting he landed on her face, hung out on her cheek for a little bit, and then made his way down and hung out on her hand, and she was trying to get my attention, but I was so engrossed being a new council member that I didn't notice him with her. He's also made his presence known and interrupted a few, like our police chief Stephanie Revering. Our first night at council, she was giving an update, and she kinda, if you watch it, she'll go, "Oh my gosh, there's a bug in my face."
And you have to say, "That's not just any bug, chief, that is Bart, the official council bug."
Right, actually, his title was City Forestry Consultant.
Oh, nice. I noticed you unveiled a new flag for Crystal recently, and Bart was not on it, how did he feel about that?
Well, he wasn't on the design, but he was on the flag itself. He hung out there a few times, just sat there on the flag. But, second best thing, you know, it's a good consolation prize.
Okay, it sounds like there's no place in the city he is not allowed to go.
Right, including hands and cheeks and faces. But to Bart's credit, though, he developed quite a following online, and that's why I gave him a title. And he has not been present at the last meeting, I'm hoping he found his way back outside now that it's spring.
Gotcha, and if he's listening to this, he of course is welcome to come on the program anytime and explain his perspective on your council meetings, which is probably a little lower to the ground. I need to ask, though, does your accepting, and some would say cavalier attitude about Bart, send a message to any citizen that they can bring their box elder bug into the council meetings?
Well, they might be subject to one council member's extreme disdain for box elder bugs, so I would be very wary about that. I heard a few slams on the counter a few meetings ago, so fair warning.
Who is this butcher of Crystal to whom you're referring?
Well, he made it quite clear on Twitter that he did not care for bugs, and that was our council member Jeff Kolb.
Ah, Jeff Kolb, we will get to him, believe you me, man. But I do want to ask you, because you are relatively new, what is something that has surprised you about your council meetings?
For one, actually, I've been so impressed with how civil they've been compared to some others that I heard about at my training with the League of Minnesota Cities. I sat at a table with some that had stories, and your City Council Chronicles show was also great, because I'm listening to this thinking, "Wow, I have it really good." I mean, this has been, my campaign was positive, so I guess my biggest surprise was that, you know, we're in a really good position, I believe.
Yeah, watching your council meetings, it did surprise me to see what the tone was like, and for the listeners, let me just play a short montage of moments from your meetings.
We're located at 4835 West Broadway. Give you a great landmark, you ready? Across the street from Steve O's. Great landmark.
A dog has to have some power around here, because they don't want to hang around.
We're open by Julie last Thursday.
Had to come and see for myself.
Okay, look, either you guys have the funniest people on the planet on your city council, or everyone's in a really good mood there. Why do people have so much fun in your meetings?
I think we have not only staff, but council that appreciates humor. We work hard, we play hard, we take things seriously when we need to, but levity can go a long way with these long meetings at times, especially during budget season.
Well, even with complex things like budgets, you've bought heavy machinery, you've bought police cars, I mean, given all that you have to do, your council meetings still go by quickly. Your shortest was 11 minutes, and it's pretty typical for you to be in and out in under an hour. What is the secret to being so efficient, and does it have anything to do with the rumors that you're taking performance-enhancing drugs?
Those rumors are false. I think I would give big credit to our city manager Ann Norris and the city staff, because they know we all have daytime jobs. Some of our council members have new infants in the family, so we are trying to be careful and mindful of everyone's time. We also have work sessions after these meetings, at least once a month, so oftentimes we'll schedule things and move things along quickly so we can run in the back conference room and continue working at our work sessions.
Those work sessions actually are not videotaped, they are audio recorded, but why is it that people cannot see what's going on in there?
I think it's because of the treats on the table, nobody wants to be seen with popcorn hulls in their mouth or choking on a glass of water or something. But I think, to your point, though, there are some that stay televised, there are cities where they may move to another room, but those are televised, but we do not have any camera equipment in that conference room.
Do you think you're doing business that's worth televising in there?
I think the audio is more important, unless people want to get reactions, but I think, you know, the one thing I could see would be helpful are the slide presentations that were given. I think residents would appreciate seeing some of the things we see.
Right, right. I want to shift back to what you mentioned earlier, which is in January, you went to a training for new Minnesota city council members. What did they teach you there about city council meetings, and who were some of the hot new faces that every Tom, Dick, and Harry's gonna be talking about a year from now?
Oh boy, there were so many people in the room, quite honestly, Michael, that we, I only bonded with the few that were sitting around my table. A lot who were going through a lot in their councils with various issues, others were running smoothly like ours. Again, I just sat back after listening. Open meeting law was huge, because people can get tripped up by that and actually get fined big time if they should break an open meeting law. Violations are, you can be removed from office with a civil penalty of $300.
Wait, you can be removed from office for not having a council meeting in public?
Or you're meeting on the side and deciding on policy without the group. So if it's a couple council members having lunch or breakfast, that's not an issue, it's when you have, in our case, we have seven, so if we had four gathering together and we started talking about city business, that's when you could potentially get into trouble.
Yeah, but you have to have someone listening in to ascertain that's what you're talking about, otherwise, who's to know?
Or finding out, correct.
Well, yeah. Well, look, we are dancing all around your council meetings, so let's get right into it. Your first meeting was January 3rd of this year, and I was shocked when council member John Budacevsky, not five minutes after being sworn in, pulled a classic Budacevsky.
Looking for any adjustments on that agenda. John?
Yeah, I would like to amend the agenda for tonight, with January 15th being Martin Luther King's birthday and the holiday on the 16th, I wish that Crystal would proclaim February as Black History Month, I think is something that we should put forth proclamation for. Thank you.
That's actually not on the agenda, we're approving the agenda that's before us.
I would like to amend the agenda.
It's actually not, it's unacceptable under the council rules, you can't add an item to the agenda under the rules of the council.
If I put forth a motion to amend the agenda as so forth stated?
The motion would not be entertained.
It's just not allowed under the, I'd suggest you take a look at the rules and see how items are added to the agenda.
I will, but this being my first meeting, I'd like to amend the agenda.
Okay, so Budacevsky wants to honor Martin Luther King in this meeting. We heard council member Jeff Kolb say, "That's not allowed, you need to read the rules." Sounded like a strong way to rebuke someone on their first day. Nancy, was, there's some backstory that we're not seeing here.
There is some backstory to that, and John was a council member a few years prior. And the reason those rules were put into place a couple of years ago was because of fighting over agenda items, and we got into some conflict, in the past council did, with those trying to put things on the agenda or move things on the last minute. So the council about two years ago had put in some rules of conduct, and those were quite plainly brought up to us in our council training through the city of Crystal. We had two half-day sessions, both John and I did. So I can understand John coming into the meeting, perhaps going by the old set of rules or things that were done in his prior council time, but with the new council rules, those were explained during our tutorial, because he and I were at the same one. The first half a day, we were attending the same training. Also, the rules were marked and printed out on the dais for us to refer to.
Okay, what you're saying is that before, if a council member wanted to bring up something at a meeting, they could, and I've seen multiple city councils that allow this, but now, the agenda is pretty much locked down from the moment you get in there?
Correct, and the agenda is also brought up to us several days prior to council, so if something should come up, which quite often can happen, there may be an issue that needs to be discussed. In John's case, he was bringing up an item that was already being recognized by the state of Minnesota and by the federal government, Martin Luther King Day. From what I understand, he went to the city council or city manager and asked to have that put on the agenda, and Ann said with these new rules, if it doesn't pertain to the city of Crystal specifically, or an agenda item, an issue with the city of Crystal, it would not go on the agenda.
Gotcha. Now, speaking of rules, there is something else I noticed that seemed a little strange to me. Again, this comes courtesy of our friend John Budacevsky at the February 7th meeting.
We do have a citizen here, he's, would like to speak. John Budacevsky?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, thank you, people of Crystal, I'm John Budacevsky. Last month, we had a rather busy month, we didn't have an opportunity to be able to celebrate Martin Luther King Day, as I thought we should, we had our election, we had a lot of events that went on, so I'd like to take this time to be able to...
Okay, just listening to it, it seems perfectly normal, but what's actually happening is that Budacevsky steps off of the dais, down to the podium, and is standing in front of you talking, and not only did he do it once that meeting, he did it a second time.
All right, we have another citizen, council member, here to speak. John, for your next topic?
Thank you, it's just a reminder of John Budacevsky, a reminder, February is Black History Month, and the library, our beautiful Rockford Road Library, has a display on...
Nancy, is it a rule that if a council member wants to make an announcement, he has to leave his seat?
No, that is not correct. What, at the end of our council meetings, we have general announcements, so that any event or item that's going on, we help promote citywide events and other groups' events at the end of the meetings. The issue here is John wanted things on the agenda, and because it wasn't Crystal-specific, the city managers declined to put that on the agenda. John's alternative, then, is to use the public announcement portion or the public speaking portion to go off the dais and come out as a public citizen, which is allowed.
It sounds like this guy has given you problems. Is council member Budacevsky going his own way in these meetings?
I believe so, and it's a way for him to be heard and maybe advance things on his agenda, which is fine, he's following the procedure to do this, but, you know, we all come in with different passions, with different things that are important to us, so this is his way of expressing himself, I believe.
Well, when that clip was played earlier of you guys laughing and getting along, it seems like you have a better interaction than most city councils.
Correct.
Is what we see on camera, who you are in relation to each other off-camera?
I would agree. We all agree to disagree, and no matter what comes in, our goal is to be professional and courteous of each other and respectful.
Yeah. Which council member has the best sense of humor?
Oh boy, that, I would give that award to Julie Deschler. She's quite funny, she is, she's our veteran council member, she's serving her third term, and people love her. Her election last year was won by the widest margin.
Okay, so Julie Deschler has the best sense of humor, that was actually a trick question, the answer is you for coming on this program, so nice try, it's typical Midwestern modesty.
I should win the bravery award, I, no. But Julie is quite funny during her meetings.
Gotcha, and she is a former bartender, so I see where she gets it.
Exactly.
Okay, there is one council meeting I want to talk about in detail, because there was a visible lack of merriment. I'm talking about April 19th, you had restaurant owners standing before you who were caught failing to card people buying alcohol underage. Let's listen to a little of that.
In my mind, being here for the first time, being here once should be enough, because we do have these civil penalties, you know, projected, so the first violation should really be a deterrent to never ever let this happen again, and the second time for me is much more drastic.
I guess, you know, we failed, we know we did, and obviously, we're thoroughly embarrassed by that, and, yeah, unfortunate.
Okay, so council member Olga Parsons is frustrated, the bar owner is embarrassed, how did you feel?
Yeah, we all felt really bad in this case, this has been a business that's been around for many, many years, very nice people, the man who's speaking also had his daughter present, who's part of the business now. We're trying to impress upon them the importance of not coming back again, not in that capacity. Please do not come back again, please do not violate again, because it carries a much, much stiffer penalty.
When it comes to penalties, you, the city council, act like judges. You can give a fine, you can suspend the liquor license.
Correct.
Or both. Here's a little sound of you trying to deal with one first-time violator.
I don't have a better way of saying it, shit happens, right? People make mistakes, it's just, for us to just continue to pile on and pile on and pile on on these things, it's just really not, I'm not a big fan of that, so I'm, again, ready to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to impose a penalty of $250 and no license suspension based on the facts of this particular case.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All members opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion is tied, motion fails.
Motion fails, all right, John?
Make a motion, impose a civil fine of $750 and a license suspension for a period of one day.
Looking for a second on that one? No second? Motion fails.
I guess I will make a motion for a civil fine in the amount of $750 and no liquor suspension.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All members opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Okay, so it took you three motions to come up with a penalty, this is how John Budacevsky responds.
Just a comment, I mean, obviously, we have quite a few people here that are first-time offenders, it would have been probably a good idea just to, maybe, you know, if we just put them all in the same group, determine a fine for them, and then go forward with that, because it looks like, from my standpoint, it looks like it's inconsistent from one liquor license to the next, and it just seems, as a council, we're not being fair.
So essentially, he's saying it's really arbitrary if we give people different penalties for the same offense, and I believe he voted no on everything for that reason. What say you?
Well, I would say that in the past, when John was a council member prior, they never looked at the case, the actual case file from the police, they would just say, "Here's your fine, here's your, you know, three-day suspension." So the newer council back in 2016 adopted and asked about that, what about the case studies? And we do believe, in a case-by-case basis, that that can determine, or should determine, the level of penalty levied upon each of the violators. And by reading those, for instance, one manager didn't seem at all worried about the fact that, you know, that a law was violated, they seemed kind of complacent about it, others were quite emotional, one of the waitstaff was crying in one of the cases, and very upset, it was the first time she'd ever done this in the seven years she'd been working for this company. So, you know, when you see that, when people come to the council meeting, if they write a letter or come in person as well, that can help weigh our decision or our feeling about, you know, how they should be handed a penalty, or which penalty would be best for them.
So do people get embarrassed to be lectured like that by the city council in public, on television?
No, actually, I was surprised that most of them showed up, because we had a vaping company or business, first-time fine, that had handed tobacco product or this vaping product to someone under 18. They didn't write, they didn't show up, and no response, and that helped make a decision for us, but all of the other ones were quite comfortable, even though they felt bad about what had happened, but they strongly felt a desire to be there and address us and say, "This is what we are doing to address the problem so that it doesn't happen again."
Yeah, in that vaping case, I seem to remember it was a four-to-two vote in favor of the maximum penalty. The mayor, after the vote, muttered something to the effect of, "Next time, show up," meaning, you know, "If you don't want us to punish you to the full extent, you should be here in person." To me, that's less of applying the law and more into the realm of personal slights. Do you see it that way?
Not so much as a personal slight, I think it was just impressing upon these businesses to give them a chance, and maybe it could have been phrased a little better, because the way I understood it was, "Hey, guys, you know, we want to hear your story, we want to see you, we want to, we want to help you, we're not just in the business of slapping fines on anyone, but we want to hear your story." And in this particular case, when we read the case study, this owner was very, very upset that this had happened, he was upset with himself.
Yeah.
And I think that's why we were looking forward to hearing from him, because we didn't, you know, that may have affected the penalty that we ended up agreeing on.
You mentioned a minute ago that the council in 2016 changed the rules about imposing penalties, and you also mentioned they changed the rules about agenda items. What else can you think of that that council changed, and why did they do it?
If you go back, Michael, and they're still online, but if you go back to council meetings and work sessions prior to 2016, you will see the tenor and the tone quite changed from the way it is now. And I think that was the, you know, the decisive reason why those things were done, because when a citizen is watching these meetings, it seems more of a personality conflict, you know, and arguing was more important, or winning an argument was more important than carrying on with the city's business and deciding things that affected, you know, our residents.
Okay, so it's not just that you got two new council members this year and everything sort of resolved itself, it's that the other council said, "No, our procedures are making us not get along."
Well, the procedures back then left it wide open, for, you know, if there were personality conflicts and things like that, there were no rules in place at that time. So they would argue, I remember sitting in one meeting where they kept arguing about an agenda item, or moving an agenda item, and it was because they could, it was just to create a conflict, it was more to antagonize either the mayor or the other council members. So that was, you know, and when that affects city business, they even actually, I believe they had, what do they call those people, those conflict management consultants?
Mediators? Mediators?
-mediators would come in. I believe they had a mediator who came in because if things were getting so difficult. So, you know, if you go back and listen to those meetings, and then you come back to now, it's much more professional. Things are moving smoothly. We can get on to city business and do what we're supposed to do and what we were elected to do.
Oh, that's incredible to hear.
Yeah.
You had two new people this year, which means that you had five old people. And, well, not old as in age, but since you yourself went to council meetings, you saw what those people were like back in 2014. So have they changed?
I believe so. The things just seemed to go smoothly. And the second new person that you mentioned was actually, John was a former council member. So he came in under a different set of rules and not understanding that things have changed too much. So I did, there was one work session where he got a little antagonistic towards some volunteers who were, you know, applying for a light rail commission position. And he ended up turning it into a quasi Gorsuch hearing, unfortunately. And we felt bad. We kept saying, we tried to interrupt and say, "This isn't pertinent to this position." He had an issue with one of the volunteers, but he also, the next meeting that we had for the second applicant, I brought up right away that rule regarding conduct. And I said, "May I remind the council of this particular rule of conduct?" And so we brought in the applicant, and it went right back into it again. So we had to kind of shut that down. So the rule is there for a good reason, I believe. And it helped steer that discussion back to where it should be. And in both instances, we apologized for that council member's conduct to the applicant. This is a volunteer.
Well, I don't want this to turn into the John Budashevsky psychoanalysis hour.
Absolutely.
But has he acclimated to how things are different now?
I'm hoping he will. I'm hoping he will. I, don't be strident and don't be difficult, don't be demeaning. Just, you know, give us your lobby for us. You know, use that position to lobby for your position. You might change hearts and minds by doing it in a respectful way.
I'm curious. Your meetings are very collegial, very polite-
Sure.
-and very sparsely attended. Now, back when the council was more adversarial, did more people show up to watch just in case something happened?
I believe attendance is probably about the same. But again, that lack of attendance might be speaking to the fact that overall, people are pleased with the level of services of the city. And that also, people are busy, so they watch us online. Our streamed meetings get quite a lot of views.
Gotcha. Well, most of those views were from me, so I'm sorry for goose-ing your numbers this week. But the mayor does say every meeting that Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts are welcome to come in, say the Pledge of Allegiance, raise the flag. Is anyone going to take him up on that offer?
It has happened a few times. Not so much this year. I think, did we have, we had one group of Girl Scouts in this year. And, but it's something he brings up every meeting, because we want to encourage that.
Sure.
You know, the civics participation, especially with kids.
Gotcha. If I come to Crystal, Minnesota, may I lead the Pledge of Allegiance and raise the flag?
Yes, you may, Michael. We would love it.
Fantastic. I'll even let Bart help me out.